Good night, everybody. Good night. We are again in Bible study and I want to welcome every person who is here tonight, mate. And I'm mindful of the fact that we are would have some people who were not here last week and so I'll just quickly go over what we are about. Alright. We are the sheep of Isphastia. And that can come from a lot, a lot of Psalms and so I chose Psalm seventy-nine, verse thirteen. For the, the, the icon. Psalm. And last week we spoke about, um, what we need to know about sheep. And we said they are four-legged animals, they are covered with wool, they have four stomachs. And we'll come to that in our final week presentation, the first stomach part. They are domesticated animals, they cannot carry burden. They need constant supervision. They are emotional creatures and they are the animal most mentioned in the Bible. And so we talked, we spoke about the, um, where they were first mentioned in Genesis four, verse two. And that's the story of Cain and Abel. We, I told you last week that a man, um, their man's wealth was measured in sheep and cattle. It was a currency, it was used as a currency where people would exchange goods and services for sheep. Wool was used for clothing and a main source of fabric. It was used for bedding also. Young sheep alum was used for sacrifice. So, I also told you last week that the, the Bible mentioned Israel as the sheep. And I gave you some scripture verses to back up that. And it said, "We are also as Christians lightened unto sheep." So that's where we ended last week. So this week we are going to talk about the shepherd. And we have four main scriptures, no, not four, three main scriptures that I want us to pay close attention to. And the first is First Timothy three, verse one to seven. And I'd really like readers, First Timothy three, one to seven, the shepherd. The shepherd can also be called overseer, the under shepherd. It can also be called the pastor or the elder. I'll call this some denomination. Some denomination don't use pastors, they use elders and some denomination don't use elders or pastors, they use overseers. And so we at Open Bible have pastors, we also have superintendents and we also have regional and superintendent. We have general superintendent and regional superintendent pastor. The office of elders is not, is not considered a, a pastoral pastoral office, but it is, can be lightened onto a pastoral office inside Open Bible, alright? So we are going to look at First Timothy three, one to seven. Any reader? Remember, we are using readers and I want you to be very aware because I want us to pay close attention as we read this scripture tonight. Any readers?
I'll take it.
Thank you very much.
First Timothy three, one to seven. "This is a true saying: If a man desire the office of a bishop, he desire a good work. A bishop then must be blameless, the husband of one wife, vigilant, sober, of good behaviour, given to hospitality, apt to teach, not given to wine, wine, no striker, not greedy or filthy looter, but patient, not a brawler, not covetous. One that rule it well is his own house, having his children in objection with all gravity. For if a man know not how to rule his own ho- house, how shall he take care of the church of God?" Not a novice. Sorry, not a novice, lest being lifted up with pride, he fall into the condemnation of the devil. Moreover, he must have a good report of them which are without, lest he fall into reproach and the snare of the devil.
Amen. So, what are the observations? I want full participation. Remember, I said that last week that we were going to have full, full participation from everybody who is here. And, um, as I told you before, the bishop is, can be seen as the pastor in this case, alright? So, the pastor is the bishop. God has specific qualification for leaders in church. That is my first observation. Don't put up any more brand. Anybody else have any observation? God has specific qualification for leaders in the church. A lot of times, some people think that is the person who is loudish. Did I call him that? Or the person who can speak more or eloquent or but we don't see that, that here, not, we don't see eloquence here. First observation, it says, if a man desire, anyone desire to be an elder, a bishop, a pastor, that man must, that man must be above reproach. Must be above reproach. It doesn't say that, say that somebody is not going to say something about you or do something to you, your character. But it must be able to withstand criticism. Your character must be able to withstand criticism. And there are some qualifications for withstanding the criticism. He must be a faithful person, not only to the word of God, but to his own wife. Faithful to his wife. That is one of the one, first thing. He must exercise self-control. Must have a good repetition. Must enjoy having guests in his house. Must be able to teach. Must not be a drunkard. Must not be violent. He must be gentle, not quarrelsome, not love bribery. He must be able to manage his own family well. Not having children who are disrespectful and do not obey him. And it has a, a caveat to that one. For if a man cannot control his own home, how can he take care of church of God? So the qualification is specific. Right? And nowhere in it does the qualification says the person must be gifted or spirited. That means say, they don't say anywhere in there where it says you must be gifted or spirited. That means say, so many times, some of us are looking for some people who are we call charismatic. And so we are not, we are not drawn to a pastor who is gentle. We want one where he doesn't come to church and then decide to preach. Jump over the bench and march down the place and carry on and pour out sweat. It doesn't say that here. It says, must be able to teach. Have a good repetition, above reproach, faithful to his wife, exercise self-control. And part of self-control, I think is, is even, oh, you conduct yourself in the public when you preach in the word of God. Okay? Remember, full participation. I pause here for comment. Let me see if I can text it on some people. It's only nine of us. Oh, really? Sister, Sister Bev, Pakistan. I don't want any of the nine of us fall asleep, you know. It's a bear.
I'm not falling asleep, but it just takes a while to get to the man. Yes, man?
Yes, man. Comment, please. I, I want full participation. I want to have a face-to-face discussion with people and we are talking to each other.
Well, what I observed from the first part is that, um, I have the opinion that the Lord called persons for certain position, and I'm certain, and then, and then, we want to align for certain position in the church. But then, what, um, the verse is saying, if you desire it, the qualification you should have. So, that, that's what I, that's what my mind was on. I was just thinking about it.
Alright. So, it comes out of the desire. God is going to work on our desire to ensure that we, 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 we we get the, what we, we need. And so it says, if you desire it, that means say you must desire, it must be, I, I desire something that is inside of you that you, that you have, uh, um, you, that you would like to do. But a lot of person aspire to be pastors for different, different reasons. So here's why we have the, 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 the qualification, what they are, what, what, what the church needs versus what we want to project. Because right across the board, from United States, um, to Africa, we find that there are a lot of person who are into the pastoral ministry because of what they think they can get out of it rather than to see what they can put into it, alright? I want, they do, a lot of them don't bring much to the table, so to speak. Right? They are in there because they want to count pennies and they, they want filthy looter. They want to establish control over a, 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 a number of persons. And we saw that in Montego Bay with, with, with a gentleman who was doing his own thing and went to heaven, alright? So, I, I, so they call him pastor. So there are a lot of persons who are called pastors who are not, who does not meet the qualification I set out here. Right?
Okay. So, so then, if you have, if you have the desire, you should make sure you have these qualifications. If you don't have them, then, you know, you have to come and try again.
If you don't have this qualification, what it means therefore that, alright? There are some persons who were like, I remember a particular pastor who went to, he was a, he was, before I knew Jesus Christ, he was a old town whore, bad man and murderer, right? And then he became, he met Jesus Christ and he became a Christian. And so he wa- he became a pastor. So, now this past can't be held against him. What is today is what we are dealing with. And so it might say that you are, you are, you are, you are not qualified because of something you did in the past. But that is not what the Bible is saying. It's saying if you desire, this is now the qualification, the present qualification you should have. Not what went on in the past was what you should have, no. And therefore, the, 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 the important thing is that the, the present life that we live. Alright.
Yes, yeah, because then they're not trying to give you all, what shall we, all I know sin, so really shouldn't go back there.
Praise God. Right. So, it says you must not be a novice either. A novice mean that you do not know the word, you do not understand the implication, you are having a stick to learn anything. And so Paul was speaking out of a, out of a fact that he, he spent three years, so to speak, outside when he became a Christian, he spent three years just being taught by the Lord and the Holy Spirit. And so he, he was saying, now that he is at this place, he's saying, he's saying to Timothy, "Don't make anything put you down, but you must not be a novice. Don't put any novice in the church. Don't put them to lead God people if they are, they, they don't know what they're talking about." Luke says, "You must not be a new believer." Sometimes, I, sometimes some people, as soon as they are part of a church, they, they just get safe, you know, and they become a part of the church. And the daughter has blessed them with a few, uh, we have gifted them, given gold, it's best of some gift and so they receive from the Holy Spirit some gifting and so they decide that it's their time to form a church. So we have all keeper churches in Germany, all sort of ministries. All of them have, some of, some of them have people named. Ministry this, ministry that, miracles this, that, 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 that all kind of name they give themselves and some of them even have their own name. And so, when you check it, they have no found, no firm foundation, they're rooted and grounded in the world because they didn't get more, not more. And so we have people leading people as they introduce them. Alright. Acts, Acts twenty, verse seventeen and twenty-eight.
Before you move on, Sister Hillary, I am asking the question. Um, because these instructions are so specific, does a person, um, if there, for example, if one, if a person doesn't have one or two of these qualities, would that person be, should be exempt from becoming a bishop?
I would say, alright, which one would we, would we exempt now? If you're not married, then you can't, you can't be faithful to your wife. So that, that, um, it, it, it means therefore, when you're married, you must aspire to be faithful to your wife. If you, if you are, if you lack self-control, no, you cannot be, you can't lack self-control and you start to berate because you're going to end up berating the sheep, so to speak. And cussing all people so that, no. You, you can't be, if you lack self-control, if you don't live wise and you are, you are, you are always in the wrong. You make wrong decisions then. You, 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 you decide to put your money in oil into and, 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 and put the church's money in, it, it, put your personal money in oil into and all the other scams that the people come up with and they get rich quick and you think that, that it would be unwise decision you would make. If you were in control of the, the church, you'd want the church to go down that road too. If you are, if your reputation is not good, that people think you are miserable. Sconder. No, you can't be a pastor because people are going to say, "That church may not go over there." Everything you acquire, I can't figure out which one of them we would exempt. I can't figure out one of them we just exempt. Other than maybe, I can't, I can't figure it out. I can't figure it out with one of them with the exam.
Okay. And I don't think the person can grow into their, the being of bishop. And it might not be strong in some area, but it can grow into it over time.
I do believe it can grow into over time. Alright, so we, suppose they have a self-control problem. And so you are, you, you, you are really fasting and praying about that self-control problem. And you, you are not, we're going to fly off the handle and, and cuss over people and quarrel some. But you, you, you know, the temptation arise and so you know that's one of your weaknesses. I have seen in Open Bible, and I must say in Open Bible, where a particular minister was, has been reprimanded three different, at least three times with regards to monetary issues. Today is one of the better pastors having sat on the, what do I call, on the, on the, on the, on the leadership of the persons who were there to pray him through and to, and to give him, and give him instruction as how to, you ought to behave and to ma- how to manage his money. And so he is a, was one of the better pastors today. So there are some people who are going to find themselves, their weaknesses are going to be so obvious that they need help. And so, so other person must rally around them and help them. I'm not saying that we will not have pastors who have none of these faults. There might be pastors who beat their wives. I've known pastors, not, not in Open Bible, I don't know what Open Bible, who have beaters of their wives. And yet they take very good care of the, the, the rest of the flock, except their wives.
Yes, sir.
And I've known those who have been, um, it, it's just, it's just, there are just some things that are not open to our eyes, but God know and they work through it with God and with maybe a count, a trusted person. But I don't think everybody is perfect in every way. But I do think it's, it's a qualification to aspire to. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah.
So, that is what I hope that we aspire to that, um, anybody who, and it does not only work for the shepherd, um, the shepherd, or, you know, because we have under shepherd, even the person who is, who is the head of a department. Say, say, the, the, the men of vision president, the woman, um, the woman of world president must as- aspire to these qualifications. And the Roman stuff, all of us as Christians should aspire to these qualifications because guess what? We, 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 we want to ensure that we are good Christian people and I don't see nothing here that would make us un-Christianite. Or too ambitious as a Christian, so to speak. Alright? So that is the first thing. So we're moving on now. Acts twenty, verse seventeen and twenty-eight. Remember, I'm asking for readers. Alright. So let me read from the New Living Translation. It says here, I'm going to back up to, um, I'm going to back up to, um, verse sixteen. Paul had decided to stay on it. On past episodes, Paul didn't want to spend any more time in the province of Asia. He was wanting to get to Jerusalem if possible in a time for the festival of the Pentecost. But when he landed at Melter, he sent message to the elders of the church at Ephesus, asking them to come and meet him. So he, Paul had, had, had a previous journey, um, established church in Ephesus, so he was now going back on his way to Jerusalem and so he had, he sent to, uh, asked the people to come and meet him, the, the pastor. So he will have a word with them because he wanted impart some things to them. So he was ca- he called them up back and said, "Come, let's meet, let's, let's meet up and let's talk about some of the things that were happening." So he said to them in verse twenty-eight, "So guard yourself and God's people. Feed and shepherd God flock in church, who will purchase with his own blood, over which the Holy Spirit has appointed you as elders." Same saying, you must guard them, shelter them, feed them. Right? Because he said, "Remember, that's your duty as the shepherd, as the elder, that you are to guard, guard, God's people. Feed and shepherd the flock." And just in case, I then, I, yes, I did not tell you what a shepherd is. A shepherd is always watching over the sheep. They are there to guard them, protect them, remove them from one pastor to another pastor and so in this, he's saying, feed them, guide them, ensure that you watch over them. Because it is not an appointment you get just like that. It's the Holy Spirit who also appoints you, alright? First Peter five, verse two. Please use, what, look at your screen and participate, please. First Peter five, verse two. And it raises us. Care for the flock that God entrusts to you. Watch over it willingly, not grudgingly. Not for what you will get out of it, but because you are eager to serve God. Not grudgingly, not what you'll get out of it, but because you're eager to serve God. And of course, if you desire, as, as, as it says in, 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 in First Timothy three, verse one, if you desire an office, if you desire such an office, it is not just a desire, you can have the desire, but it, it, but if you are going to work in this office, it's actual work. It is no easy work. So here what Mark nine, verse thirty-five. Reader please. Mark nine, verse thirty-five. Somebody, read, Mark nine, verse thirty-five. Okay.
What did it say, Sister Hillary? I never heard that.
Mark nine, verse thirty-five. That's Mark nine, verse thirty-five. Alright, Mark nine, verse thirty-five. And it says, "Sitting down, Jesus called the twelve and said, 'Anyone who wants to be first must be the very last and the servant of all.'" Can you imagine that that's what a pastor is? The shepherd, the servant of all. Because he has to put the, 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 the congregation, the, 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 the the sheep before himself most of the time. What he has to do, he has to serve all of them. He has the, the, the awesome task of serving all of them because whatever their, whatever their needs are, they are looking for him to meet the needs of the congregation, right? So individually, individuals are looking for him to meet their needs and so sometimes it's a, it's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not sometimes, all the time, it's a difficult job that has to, that has to, to, to be balanced with everything else that we have to do in life, alright? I, I, I can't say anything. Brother Horace, go ahead. You must just, you must, brother, when I fall.
No, I monitor, I monitor.
Go ahead, brother Horace.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, brother Horace.
Evening, brother.
I looked at First Peter five, two. Mm-hmm. And it, in my mind, is a very loaded verse. I hear you defining the role of the, the elder. And you're making it distinct from the, the pastor and the bishop. And you're making it distinct from the, the pastor and the bishop.
I, I was, I did just call in different denomination, um.
Yeah, I, I understand that, it's, I understand, that is quite clear to me. But this particular, um, verse, it has a line, and I'm reading from the New Testament, sorry, from the. Kingsian version.
Mm-hmm.
It said, feed the flock of God which is among you.
Mm-hmm. Watch.
Does that condense into shepherd? Feed the flock which is among you?
Yes, it's a shepherd job.
Then the next verse says, taking oversight zero. That word oversight is the, is the Greek word episcopio, you know? Which means the same word as bishop. The same word of bishop.
Let me go to my, my, my extra notes. It says here. New Testament, bishop is, yes, for that one is episcop. It probably mean over, watcher, and overseer, and over watcher. Imagine, imagine, imagine the, 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 the physical sheep and shepherd.
So it says here shepherd then, and bishop then?
It, it means, look at what, look at what the shepherd does when the sheep is, when the sheep is, um, laying at rest. The shepherd don't fall asleep, you know? He oversees them, he wa- he watch over them, he looks over them. So I, I think it's interchangeable. Depends on where you are, because even in, in our, or, or I take for the New Testament church. Which have a bishop, right? He has, um, a pastor that, that fall under his care. So he is caring for the under shepherds, so to speak. Right? And so a bishop maybe having three churches or four churches or five churches, depends on what it is. And he oversees those pastors, he look over them to watch over what they are doing to the sheep. So to speak. Respond. Art?
Um, yeah, this is quite clear, I, I, I guess you. My understanding is that it's pretty much a, a lay pastor. Kind of, because he's been absolute pastoral work, but he's not ordained, it seems to me that he's like a lay pastor.
The bishop?
The, the, no, the, the elder.
Oh, the elder, yeah, he is a lay pastor, that's why I said he must be, he, 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 he must be apt to teach also. So he is, and he must watch over the people, the, oh, the office of the elders, that's what you are contesting.
Yes.
Oh, no, we, we know, but, but I do see, as I said, the Adventist call their pastors elders. Depends on where you are at, I, I think our elders must be able to teach the word of God. And it's not only that, they must be, they must watch over, they also must also be part of the watchman flock too, they must be watching too.
Absolutely.
Yes, alright.
So, Sister Hillary.
Yes?
You said something that the Adventists call their pastors elders, but their pastors are not called elders. You have elders depend from pastors in the church in the Adventists.
Oh, you have under, the, the, the second in line to be elders?
Yes.
Please correct, they also.
In my department at work, I have a number of Adventists, and I remember. Um. My coworkers, like their husbands, serve as elders, and you have first elder, and you have second elder, or something like that.
Well, they, they, they are treated as pastors, they are treated as pastors, they may not call them.
They are, but, yeah, but the pastor is different, so you have the pastor of the church, and then you have the elders.
Okay, but they are treated as pastors, yes, in open Bible, we don't treat our elders as pastors. But they treat their elders like they're pastors. So the, the, that person have pastoral responsibility, because most of the pastors don't actually live amongst the people, but the elders do. You understand?
Yeah, man, yeah, man, because I, I have been to a few funerals with Adventists, and it is the elder. That would be, say, for example, at the graveside to commit the body and all of that.
Yes, so they, they are there, they are there, so the different people, uh, different people have different rules and, um. That they give to the different people, alright? So, but they are all, they are all, that's why I said, even the, even the, the men of vision president and the women of world president. And, and, and the young people, this, this particular scripture goes for them, you know? That they should aspire to this qualification, and to watch over, care for the flock that God has entrusted to them. Because if, um, if, 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 if brother, brother Brian get the young people them to, to supervise, so to speak. And he doesn't pay attention to what they are doing, it, the responsibility is his, you know? Remember, the pastor is that omnipresent thing can be everywhere, so it means he has to delegate, um. For other persons to, 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 um, to, to do things. And so if he delegates somebody, I, that person will be, can be called a under shepherd. Easily called a under shepherd. So that is what, that is, that is what we can, we can say, that, that every per- the, the shepherd in the. The taking care of God's flock that has been entrusted to you is basically. And to watch over it willingly, willingly, is a serious responsibility. Alright. Moving right along. Next. There's a comment. And. And, and, and this is Charles Purdon, he said, what youth is a lazy minister, is, he is no good either to the world. To the church or to himself, he is dishonored to the noble, he. He is a dishonor to the noble profession that can be bestowed upon him, upon the son of men. That is a lazy pastor, lazy minister, lazy person who come to the church to say he's a pastor. And a lot of times, a lot of persons want to be the pastor, so to speak, but they don't want to do any work. And I, and I shudder to think of some of the, the thing that pastors passed during in Jamaica. And we are, we have some celebrity people, or some wannabe celebrities, who put themselves in the pulpit and call themselves pastors. And so. What youth is a lazy minister, Charles Purdon, ah. Alright. Next slide. Next slide now, which is Ezekiel thirty-four. And I want somebody, I want two, three readers to read Ezekiel thirty-four, we're not going to go through everything that Ezekiel thirty-four, but I thought this was. Most, most, most useful. If we are to look at Ezekiel, and remember now, while I'm rambling, somebody find Ezekiel, um, thirty-four. Ezekiel was a prophet to the, to the nation of Israel. Ezekiel had been taken into Babylon and captivity. In the second wave of, of, of the, of the raid on Jerusalem, Daniel was in the first, Ezekiel was in the second. And so Ezekiel is prophesying to a set of people who are in captivity, right? And he is prophesying to the, the, the persons at this time, and he, and this is where. The, the Lord brings into focus those that were put in charge of the people of Israel. Similarly. We want to see what lessons we can learn from this. Alright, so let's go now, reader, I want somebody to read from verse one. To ten, and then somebody from ten, from eleven. To. To twenty-four, and then from the twenty-four to the end, twenty-five to the end, three persons, three readers, please.
Okay, I can begin, I do one to ten.
Yeah, thank you.
Ezekiel thirty-four, starting verse one, and the law, and the word of the Lord came unto me saying. Son of man, prophesy against the shepherds of Israel. Prophesy and say unto them, thus saith the Lord God unto the shepherds. Who be to the shepherds of Israel that do feed themselves? Should not the shepherds feed the flocks? The fat, and he clothed you with the wool, he killed them that are fed, but he feed not the flock. The disease have he not strengthened, neither have he healed that which was sick. Neither have he bound up that which was broken, neither have he brought again that which was driven away. Neither have he sought that which was lost, but with force and with cruelty have he ruled them. They were scattered, because there is no shepherd, and they became meat to all the beasts of the field when they were scattered. My sheep wandered through all the mountains and upon every high hill. Yea, my flock was scattered upon all the face of the earth, and none did search or seek after them. Therefore, ye shepherds, hear the word of the Lord. As I live with the Lord God, surely, because my flock became a prey. And my flock became meat to every beast of the field, because there was no shepherd. Neither did my shepherd search for my flock, but the shepherds fed themselves and fed not my flock. Therefore, oye shepherds, hear the word of the Lord. Thus saith the Lord God, behold, I am against the shepherds, and I will require my flock at their hand. And cause them to cease from feeding the flock, neither shall the shepherds feed themselves anymore. For I will deliver my flock from their mouths, that they may not be meat for them. I'm picking up at verse eleven.
Somebody, verse eleven? Anybody awake, verse eleven?
For thus said the Lord God, behold, I, even I will both search my sheep and seek them out. As a shepherd seeketh out his flock, in the day that he is among his sheep that are scattered. So will I seek out my sheep, and will deliver them out of all places. Where they have been scattered in the cloudy and dark day. And I will bring them out from the people, and gather them from the countries, and will bring them to their own land. And feed them upon the mountains of Israel, by the rivers, and in all the inhabited places of the country. I will feed them in a good pasture, and upon the high mountains of Israel shall their fold be. There shall they lie in a good fold, and in a fat pasture shall they feed upon the mountains of Israel. I will feed my flock, and I will cause them to lie down, said the Lord God. And I will seek that which was lost, and bring again that which was driven away, and will bind up that which was broken. And will strengthen that which was sick, but I will destroy the fat and the strong, I will feed them with judgment. And as for you, o my flock, thou says, thus said the Lord God, behold, I judge between cattle and cattle. Between the rams and the hegoes. See made it a small thing unto you to have eaten up the good pasture, but ye must tread down with your feet. The residue of your pastures, and to have drunk of the deep waters, but ye must foul the residue with your feet. And as for my flock, they eat that which ye have trodden with your feet. And they drink that which you have fouled with your feet. Therefore, thus said the Lord God unto them. Behold, I, even I, will judge between the fat cattle and between the, the lean cattle. Where must I stop?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Because ye have thrust with side and with shoulder, and pushed all the disease with your horns. Till ye have scattered them abroad, abo- abroad. Therefore will I save my flock, and they shall no more be a prey, and I will judge between cattle and cattle. And I will set up one shepherd over them, and he shall feed them, even my servant David. He shall feed them, and he shall be their shepherd. And I, the Lord, will be their God, and my servant David, a prince among them. I, the Lord, have spoken it.
And I will make with them a covenant of peace, and I will cause evil beasts to cease out of the land. And they shall dwell safely in the wilderness and sleep in the woods. And I'll make them the, and I'll make them and the places around about my hill a blessing. And I will cause the showers to come down in this season. There shall be showers of blessing, the trees of the field shall yield her food. And the herd shall yield her increase, and they shall be safe in their, in their land. When I have broken the bands of their yoke, and deliver them out of the hands of. Of those that serve themselves, serve themselves of them. And they shall no more be a prey to the hidden, neither shall, shall the beasts of the land devour them. For they shall dwell safely, none shall make them afraid. And I will raise up from them a plant of renown, and they shall be no more consumed with hunger in the land. Neither bear the shame of the hidden anymore. Thus shall they know that I, the Lord their God, am with them. And that they, even the hosts of Israel are my people, said the Lord God. And ye, my flock, the flock of my pastor, are men. And I am your God, said the Lord God. Okay. Praise the Lord. Word of the Lord. Ezekiel thirty-four. I think everybody will aspire. Any leadership position, especially pastorate, should read Ezekiel thirty-four. Because I think it's a profound word for every aspirant. Of any kind of church leadership. That you, that anybody who takes it on must do some things. And so we're going to talk about the lessons we could, we can learn. Use of authority. Use the authority to benefit other people. We don't want God to say woof to any of us. So whatever here are authority we have, use it to benefit the people that we are set over. Serve them in love. Serve them with sincerity. Serve them with righteousness. We must, as a people, give an account for those that we are put. In charge of. What do I mean by that? If you get five people to supervise, we must see what happens to the five persons. So like Sister Dunbar, who, who was in charge of the, 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 the follow-up ministry. Altor workers, that, when she give us somebody to follow up, we must give an account to her. So she must also give an account. And so, when we are asked to serve, serve in love, serve with sincerity, serve with righteousness. And must all at times remember that we are going to give an account for those who we are put in charge of, alright? Alright. So that is one of the, some of the lessons to learn from the, from, from it. But one of the deep, one more deeper, um, lesson that we need to, next I grant, duty of the shepherd as seen in this chapter. Any comment before we talk about duty of the, the shepherd? Anything that stands out to anybody? But having read this chapter? Anything stand out to anybody? Alright. Since I feed the sheep. And I have a whole slew of scripture there, and I want the participation, please, and thank you very much, everybody. Feed the sheep. Somebody, sorry, somebody start Jeremiah, Jeremiah three verse fifteen. Somebody else said John twenty-one verse seventeen, sorry, verse fifteen to seventeen. Next Isaiah fifty-five, one to two. Hebrews twelve, five, twelve to fourteen. First Timothy four, verses six. First Peter two, verse two, Matthew four, verse four. Anybody, anywhere?
Jeremiah thirteen fifteen.
Okay.
Jeremiah thirteen fifteen, and I will give you shepherds according to my heart, who will feed you with knowledge and understanding.
What they will feed you with?
Knowledge and understanding.
Because that is what the, the, the sheep needs. Knowledge and understanding. Knowledge of God and understand His word. John twenty-one.
Fifteen to seventeen.
Yes.
So when they had dined, Jesus said to Simon, Peter, "Simon, son of Jonas, lovest thou me more than these?" He said unto him, "Yea, Lord, thou knowest that I love thee." He said unto him, "Feed my lambs." He said to him again, the second time, "Simon, son of Jonas, lovest thou me?" He said unto him, "Yea, Lord, thou knowest that I love thee." He said unto him, "Feed my sheep." He said unto him the third time, "Simon, son of Jonas, lovest thou me?" Peter was grieved, because he said unto him the third time, "Lovest thou me?" And he said unto him, "Lord, thou knowest all things, thou knowest that I love thee." Jesus said unto him, "Feed my sheep."
Interesting, interesting, um, discourse. More interesting discourse, because when Jesus called, um, Peter, he said, "I'll make you fishers of men." Alright? So Jesus was crucified, burdened to, and rose from the dead, and he found Peter fishing again, for fish. And so, when they have dined, when they are finishing, he says, you love them more than you love them, what was happening, they were on the place to fish them, and the fishing last there. So this time, you know, you don't want him to be a, 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 a fisherman, you want to be a shepherd, feed my sheep. Calling from being a fisherman to a shepherd. And of course, you know, Peter became what we call the bishop of the first church. Right? So, feed my sheep. Isaiah fifty-five, verse one and two, anybody? The quicker we do this, the quicker you go to your bed. Isaiah fifty- Isaiah fifty-five, verses one and two.
I'll take that one, and then hopefully we'll get some more participants. Please, guys, don't be shy. Isaiah fifty-five, verse one and two.
Yeah.
And it reads thus, "Oh, everyone that thirsteth, come ye to the waters; and ye that have no money, come ye, buy and eat. Come, yea, come, buy wine and milk without money and without price. Wherefore do ye spend the money for that which is not bread, and your labor for that which satisfies not? Harden diligently unto me, and eat ye that which is good, and let your soul delight itself in fatness."
So, it's spiritual food, calling you back away from the, the physical things. Come and heat of, um, taste and see that the Lord is good, come heat. By, you don't, if you're going to cast anything, just come and feast in, in, in the things of the spirit. And so, it's calm, um, Isaiah is, is, is saying, um, it's prophesying, come heat. Heat. Alright. I'll make sure that somebody, um, I'll read Matt, I'll read it. No, it's not Matt. I, I read it.
I read Hebrews.
Go ahead, read Hebrews, sister.
Hebrews five, verse twelve to fourteen. In fact, though, though by this time you ought to be teachers, you need someone to teach you the elementary truths of God's word all over again. You need milk, not solid food. Anyone who lives on milk, being still an infant, anyone who lives on milk, being still an infant, is not acquainted with the teaching, the teaching about righteousness. But solid food is for the who by constant use have trained themselves to distinguish good from evil.
So, you feed the sheep meal, food. The sheep need food, so you must feed them, right? So, even, and he says, you're, you're, you know, if you're, if you're mature, you're going to eat solid food. If you're a baby, you're not going to have solid food, right? You need milk. And so, first Peter two, verse two says, desire sincere, like newborn babies, you must crave the pure spiritual milk, so that you will grow into full experience of salvation. Cry out for this nourishment. So, it says, that's, that's New Living Translation, first Peter two, verse two. You are to desire, to crave the spiritual milk, so that you will grow, right? Into full maturity. So, you can write another one, first Timothy four, verse six, and Matthew four, verse four. Anybody have those? Alright, right, I know. So, the, the, the thing about, um, the, the, the other duty of the shepherd that we see in, um, in Ezekiel thirty-four, is that you are to strengthen the weak. Strengthen the weak. A lot of times, we, we, we tend to, to, to forget those who are weak, and it, it, we, we treat them as we treat them. If a child is slow in the class, they get left behind in, in the, in the, in, 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 in the physical world, so to speak, in the academics. If they are slow, they are to get left behind. And so, we, we sometimes carry that over into the church, but the, 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 the word to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the shepherd, is that you are to strengthen the weak. The persons who are most feeble, we are to give, we are to strengthen them. Feed them, give them more word, be gentle with them. Serve them in love, serve them with sincerity, serve them with righteousness, give them more of, of, of what they, um, what they need. We have to heal the sick. And a lot of person might, might say, oh, you have to have a healing ministry. If God make you the shepherd, God tell us, say, I can pray, or if you hope me a moat and pray, you will heal the sick, put your lea hand on them, pray. It's not you going to do the healing, it's the Holy Spirit is going to do the healing. So, here the story, all we have to do is obey, heal the sick. Bind up the broken and wounded. A lot of person comes in while motionally scared into the church, and himself trying to, 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 to seek to love them through their difficult state, time and situation. We just open more pan of salt and dash it in on their wound, and say, that I will cure you, so just take this and go on. Bind up the broken and wounded. It means therefore that there are some people who are going to be there, that are going to desire different things, that are, they need for different things. Other than what the, the person who is more mature is looking for. The, the, the person might be, 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 be so wounded by what the world has done to them, and when they come into the church, we further wound them, and so, a lot of times, they say people leave their church from church because of church wounds. We wound them. We say things about them, we do not see the healer. Right? So that is one of the things the, 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 the shepherd need to do. Bind up the broken and the wounded. Bring back correct the disobedient. The disobedient person is, is likely to be headstrong and go about their business, and, and it can be like to, a, um, a, a sheep who walks in the water and muddy the water for the other ones, not to, not to drink, right? And so, we are to bring them back, correct them, teach them the right thing, take them away from the, the, the situation that they are doing that is harmful, right? And seek the lost. Seek the lost, because we are tasked with the, 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 the protective order, so to speak, that's to go find it. Go seek, find it. And if we go seek and find the lost, that's the shepherd's job, seek and find the lost. Bring them back into relationship with God and the church, alright? Man has been lost, and so we have to look for that person that is lost. And we, we know the, 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 the parable of the lost kind, and the, how the woman swept the floor, and when she had found her lost kind, she rejoiced. Also, the lost sheep, when the, the shepherd found him, put him on his shoulder, and he brought him back, alright? I'm missing a page in my, oh, yeah, sorry. So finally, the promised shepherd. The promised shepherd. Any comment before I, I'm not going to keep you long, I promise. The promised shepherd. And we're going to recap Ezekiel, um, thirty-four, verse twenty-three and twenty-four. And since I'm still there, using two passages, it was easy to be there. And I'll set up one shepherd over them, and he shall feed them, even my servant David. He shall feed them, and he shall be their shepherd. And I, the Lord, will be their God, and my servant David a prince among them. I, the Lord, have spoken it. Somebody, please, anybody, tell me what those two verses mean. Let me, let me find somebody to text it on. Anybody, what those two verses mean? No, no takers? Alright.
I think, um, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just about to take that, I knew, I'm calling names, yeah, your turn.
I, I think it's saying the same thing that Ezekiel thirty-seven is saying. The word David
Yes.
Means the seed of David.
Yeah, right? It's a prophetic word of both.
Jesus.
Amen. So I have one take.
Ezekiel, repeat, the book of Ezekiel, it does that a lot, it uses the word David in place of Jesus.
So, you're saying the promised shepherd. The promised shepherd is Jesus. And I, I found it instructed that, that, that in, in Luke two, at the birth of Jesus, shepherds were in their field, and I, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm quite a dramatic person, and so that is why I find these things interesting. The shepherd was in their field in Luke two. You finish yours before I move on?
Yeah, I made a point.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, um, Luke two, verse eight to twelve, it says, "And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flocks by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were afraid. And the angel said unto him, fear not, for behold I bring you good tidings of great joy, which, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day, in the city of David, David a savior, which is Christ the Lord." And this is what the, the promised shepherd did. I didn't, I didn't double check it. What are thousands of years later, this promised shepherd came into being, the seed of David. The seed of David. And so, it was announced the shepherd, and I thought it was so the, the parallel, well, from, from the, the, the shepherd, the promised shepherd being announced to the shepherd. The real life physical shepherd watching over the sheep, and the shepherd of the world was coming into being, and so the promised shepherd does announce the shepherd of the field. And I thought that was so dramatic. I could almost hear a drum roll. And so, I, I, I love this particular scripture, uh, when it comes to the promised shepherd. And then John ten, eleven to seventeen says, speaks of the good shepherd. See, we're coming to the close, we're almost there. Alright?
Sister Anne Lawrence has her embrace. So, Lawrence?
Alright, I, I was saying that, I don't know if it's coincidentally, but when you spoke of shepherds being there, Sister Hillary, and then I, it brought me back to Christ being born in the manger. The shepherd is born in a place where the sheep are kept. And more than likely, if the shepherd is watching over the sheep at some point in time, the shepherd might have slept in that same place.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Because I, 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 people will tell you that if their, if their animals are, are impregnated, if they're ready to have child, um, hear me saying child, if they're ready to have young one.
Yeah.
Spend a lot of time in there with the animals, in, in order to ensure that when birth is taking place, if there are any complications, they are present and ready to give a helping hand. So, at some point in time, the shepherd might have slept in the manger also. So I don't know if it's coincidental, but with God, everything is planned.
Yes, my dear, I, 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 you're so right, you're so right. I am going to try, try to join the meeting, because I think my other Zoom is, is falling apart. Yeah, so the, 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 the thing is, the thing is that we, 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 we take these things for granted. It's only when time, we are called to cross attention. Realize that we, we, we are over. We are at that place. Okay, sorry, I have to turn off one to start the other. I'm running out of charge.
Alright, brother Horace, in the meantime.
I feel constrained to point out two things. Um, Sister Anne Marie, what you shared or whatever, is I think it's a revelation from the Lord, was it is a fact that shepherds do sleep among the sheep. One. The second one is, um, Sister Hillary. This part here about duty of the shepherd, this particular slide, you know, you could have actually every point here that you mentioned on the duty of a shepherd will be found in Ezekiel, the same Ezekiel, chapter thirty-four. Every point that you have on the duty of a Every point that you have on the duty of the shepherd on the slide will be found in Ezekiel thirty four.
Oh word, sorry. I agree, every shepherd, every, every, every point here, he lays down his life for the sheep. He protects them all at all costs, he'll seek and find those that are lost. It is the same, is, is the same thing that is found, basically is found in, in Ezekiel thirty four. Because it says so in the, in the, in the, in the body, it, when, when the God says, I will do these things. I will do these things, so it's a promised shepherd. So it, it, it is, it is coming right down to where Jesus, where Jesus now says, I am the good shepherd. So it is, it is him, is Jesus making, making whole of what was prophesied in Ezekiel thirty four. Here in the, I am of the John ten verse eleven to seventeen, he's taking whole of it, right? To say that I am the promised shepherd, the same, the same thing that was promised in Ezekiel thirty four, here I am with it. I am doing these things, I am doing it, I, as a matter of fact, he has done this. So, anybody want to read the good shepherd, John ten verse eleven to, alright, I read. I am the good shepherd, give it his life for the sheep. But he that is an earl and not the shepherd, who's, who owns the sheep are not. See it the wolf coming and leave it the sheep, and flee it, and the wolf catches them and scattered the, the sheep. The earl fled, because he is an earl, and care not for the sheep. I am the good shepherd, and I know my sheep, and I know, and I'm known of mine, as the Father knows me, even so I know the, even, sorry. As the Father knows me, even so I know, even so know I the Father, and laid down my life for the sheep. And the other sheep I have, which are not of this fool, them also must bring, must I, them also I must bring. They shall hear my voice, and they shall be one fool and one shepherd. Therefore, does my Father love me, because I laid down my life, that I might take it again? So, this is Jesus taking whole of the prophecy that was made in Ezekiel thirty four. He is the shepherd, that is the peacekeeper, I will go back to Ezekiel thirty four, it says, it says, where it says, I will make them, the place run about the hill a blessing, and I will cause the showers to come down in this season, there shall be showers of blessing. If we, that is verse twenty six, if we understand that when, 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 when the promised, the, the, the promised peacekeeper, because the prince among them, the Lord spoke of in verse twenty four. He says, he will make them be a blessing in the land. And so it is that as the sheep, we are going to be, we ought to be a blessing in the land. We get to that in week four, because next week we'll talk about the pasture, alright? This week we talk, we're finishing up on the shepherd, the good shepherd, any comment? And just in case you want, and what Luke fifteen verse one to seven is about the lost, the lost, the, the lost sheep. Same thing Matthew eighteen verse ten to fourteen, so we have come to the end, I pray that.
Just before you close, Sister Hillary.
Yes.
My observations, the shepherd has a, a, a heavy task. The, 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 the role of the shepherd is a, a big one. And so that is why the shepherd has to delegate responsibility, because he alone could not carry out all of that, um, task that needs to be carried out. Because in caring for the sheep, it takes a lot. Um, when, when, when sheep go astray, it is the role of the shepherd to follow, find, if possible, the lost sheep, and, and, and the shepherd alone could not do that. And so the responsibility have to spread among others to help, to do, do, do what? To carry out the role then. Um, um, Sister Anne Marie said earlier on that when a lamb is, a sheep is about to give birth, the shepherd has to be there, and in my little research, I also, um, found that not only does the shepherd has to be there at that time, the shepherd definitely has to sleep with the sheep at times, because the shepherd has to protect the sheep from thieves, right? And wild animal, and sometimes weather, so the, the good shepherd who really cares for his flock, he has to sleep with them from time to time, in order to take, um, good care of them. So, that is how for us, um, Jesus takes care of us. We sometimes might not really see the thing happening, but even when we are asleep, he is watching over us, because he does not slumber, and he does not sleep. Though while we are asleep, he's watching over us, he's our good shepherd, and he does take care of us, yeah.
Thank you, Sister, Sister Jean, one other, one other thing, I just talk about, um, the, the sheep, the shepherd, the watching over the sheep. I, I, I am one of the person who subscribe to, 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 to farming things. And last, about a month ago, a, a young lady was, was watching over her, her, her sheep. She said she saw the sheep in distress on its back, and the sheep could not get off the back. The sheep had, um, the, the sheep was pregnant, it was a hue, and she was lying there on her back and could not get up. And so they had to physically turn the sheep over. And I thought about it, that was when this, this thought came to me around two months ago, about the, the shepherd and the sheep. How many times we, we, we find ourselves in position where we, we, we don't know how we're going to get out of it. But God just sent help, our, 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 our word come to us in the quiet of the night, or in the early morning. That, that brings us right side up, so to speak, and turn our situation around, so the shepherd is very important. And pastors are under shepherd of God, and pastors have, as we started out, elders who sometimes are take on the role of, of, um, of leadership in the church. And also, as I said, the, the person's one name, head of different, different departments, and different responsibilities could be considered under shepherd, so yes, delegation has to take place, because the pastor alone couldn't manage all that needs to be done, can't see all of the flock at one time. He might be sitting in a little, a high rise position, but he not be able to see everything that is happening. And because you not only have to watch the sheep, you have to watch the, 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 the sheep pool, so to speak. To make sure the court, the, 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 the fencing is okay, so there's a lot of things the shepherd has to do. Any more comment? Shepherd people?
Ah, Sister Hillary, um, I am thinking of like me and the shepherd to the family. And how parents watch over children, like the good shepherd. Many times in the night is when parents would keep watch, just sometimes really, if they, if the children are not well, you don't sleep.
Yes.
You just watch over them, it's like if your doors, if you hear a, a little sound, you jump up. And you, you're there. Just, ju, just looking at them, just watching over them, to ensure that all is right. You know, it, 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 it is like your, your duty to be there, you're praying over them.
So it's all a vigilance?
Yes, so that, that's what comes to my mind, how the family is to operate. We as the parents are to be the shepherd, to watch over the sheep, the children. That's what comes to my mind.
And so when, when, when Jesus says, it says Peter, feed my lamb, we, we, it is.
And, and, and that is, and that is where we come, where, how we bring up our children, what we feed them with, how we grow them up.
And, and, and therefore, and therefore, if we are good shepherds, our children should, um, should stay in the sheep pool, so to speak.
Or if they do stray, there must be something that is left within them, that will remind them.
It says, we are, we are, we are to seek those that are lost, and them go about their business, we, we are supposed to seek them out still?
Alright.
We're supposed to, well, well, sometimes we can't physically seek them out, I heard a testimony from a minister recently who said, for eighteen years she has been praying for her son, that, our, our sons that have been baptized, and went to study abroad, and they went their own way, and for eighteen years, it took, for eighteen years of prayer, it took, before one of them, his two sheep, um, one of them has returned to the sheep pool, so to speak, so she's saying, please don't stop praying. This is a minister speaking, she said, don't stop praying, we, they will return, so we can seek them with true prayer, we can seek them through, through regular conversation, we can seek them through sending them a Bible verse. What we, we, we ought to seek them, alright? So thank you, Sister Anne Marie, anybody else, any other comment? Two minutes to go, any other comment? Alright, so next week, next week we'll talk about the pasture, alright? So we will speak about the pasture next week, and I want to thank our brother Brian, and Sister Andrea, and all the other persons who are participating in tonight's Bible study. I pray that next week we will have a better time of participation, that more people will be alert and involved. I will send you some scripture, so that we can, we can, we can look at them beforehand, so we can have full participation, alright? Thank you very much for your participation tonight, thank you for being here, thank you for your involvement, thank you for sharing the word of God. I pray that tonight will, will be impactful in your life, and we will indeed have a great appreciation for the work of the pastor, and for the work of the elder, and for the work of the bishop, as we go forward, and for all the other persons who are in leadership, as we go forward, so God bless you, and you be good, um, Sister Bev, could you please go in prayer, since I know you are still awake? Sister Bev Parkinson?
So come, you know, my phone, um, in an open, I, I am here.
Please go in prayer, please, and thank you very much, Bev.
Okay, let us pray, Father God, we thank you, hallelujah, we worship you, we lift you up, we honor you. Lord, we thank you for the Bible study tonight, we thank you mighty God for breaking your word to us mighty God about the shepherd. We thank you Lord God for the good shepherd, had it not been for the good shepherd, then we will not be here. Good shepherd that take care of us, that protect us, that guide us, that give us knowledge, understanding. Father God, we thank you, hallelujah, because you have been faithful. We pray mighty God that we learn tonight, God, we will just use it to honor and to the glory for you, we will not just hear the word, but we will do the word, thank you for everyone, oh God, who is on this, um, meeting tonight. And we pray mighty God a special blessing, hallelujah, for all those who are present, hallelujah. Lord God Almighty, I pray that you fill up Sister Hillary again, mighty God, minister to her, mighty God, as she break the word, Lord God. We know that it will come straight from you, so give her that strength and that desire and that zeal and revelation, hallelujah. Hallelujah, that you require for her to have to feed your flock, Lord, we thank you for tonight, and we give you all the praise, the honor and the glory, and as we come off this meeting, I pray that you protect each and every one of the families. I pray mighty God that you give us sweet sleep, and we look to you for protection during this night, and the nights to come. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, amen.
Amen, amen, good night, everyone.